Prayer of Alderman Witcher followed by the pledge of Alderman Hite.
My gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day, thank you for your blessings, thank you for watching over us. For those unspoken prayers, we ask that you consider those with loving care. For those of us who need your guidance, and there are many of us, we pray that you guide us on a daily basis in the name of your prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic where whose stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second. Motion made and seconded that amendments to the previous meeting be approved and submitted any discussion on the motion.
Gibson, Robinson, Thomas, Berry, Parker, Height, and Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, I've got 11 communications, do I get a blanket motion?
So move.
Motion made and seconded, Councilmember want one full?
Number 11.
Number 6.
Number 11, number 6, and number 4. On the motion of all the 4, 6, and 11.
Gibson, Robinson, Thomas, Berry, Parker, Height, and Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, number 4?
By title only?
Agreed by title.
Um, this is filed by Charlie Baxter, Director of the Patrick Henry Hayes Senior Citizen Center, it is the 2005 Annual Report to the Mayor and City Council.
Motion?
Move to accept and file. Mayor, I don't know whether you want to have Mr. Sir Charlie say?
I think it'd be a good idea. Motion made and seconded, uh, Mr. Baxter, where are you? Why don't you just come on up? I, I even read that report and, uh, you know, there's a lot to be proud in in that report.
A lot to be proud of, yes, sir.
You want to just give us a few highlights?
Well, uh, we've, we have a lot of programs going on at the center. Uh, one of the interesting things was this past week, we had our 11,000th member join the center, uh, and we're having almost 700 people a day come and, uh, they're coming from all over the city. We're having people, uh, come and enjoy everything from water aerobics to, to card games and dance classes and, and even some of the meals that we put on, some of the programs we put on are, uh, well attended. So, uh, we're looking forward to the expansion. Uh, we bought a golf cart, uh, that arrived this past week that, uh, when we lose a few of those parking places, uh, with the expansion, we're gonna be able to go around in further areas of the parking lot and pick people up and bring them to the front door, so we're looking forward to that.
Is there a top end, Mr. Baxter?
Uh, we don't know that there is yet. We think we've gotten real close to it so far, though.
You just keep adding those numbers.
That's right.
But we appreciate it. Uh, on the motion to accept and file?
Mayor, I don't know whether Mr. Baxter told you or not, but his golf cart's bigger than yours.
But you can borrow mine anytime you want to.
He can haul eight people with it.
Mr. Baxter's real kind when I ask for it.
Okay.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number 6?
Do you want it read or by title?
Just title fine.
This is a letter, um, from Mayor Hayes to members of the City Council regarding the recommendation to appoint Willie Alessandro as the Director of the North Little Rock Airport Commission.
Move, accept, and file.
Second. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number 11?
We're sad, excuse me, we're sad to lose Willie from the parks, uh, he's done a terrific job there, uh, little of his background that I wasn't even aware of. Willie, you here? Uh, you know, come up to the microphone, I just make sure you reintroduce yourself. Uh, Willie has been Director of, uh, Parks or Recreation or, I know you've been, which half have you been?
I've been the Park Maintenance Superintendent, Mayor.
Yeah, Superintendent. Uh, Willie was with the Air, Air Force, uh, you have some background in, uh, airport management, if I'm not mistaken. Give us just a little of your background for you.
Well, prior to being hired by the city 15 years ago, I was, uh, with the United States Air Force. For 20 years, I was an air traffic controller during that time period. I, uh, obtained my degree in airport management and also I became a private pilot and I did have an aviation background, so consequently, of course, when this opportunity presented itself, I did apply for it.
We're, uh, we're glad you're moving from one to the other, we're, we're certainly appreciative of the work you did in parks and we look forward, uh, for you helping that airport to take off.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, number 11?
Yes, sir, by title or do you want it read?
Just read it by title.
This is a letter from Mayor Hayes to members of the City Council, it's regarding a safety and litter problems along the banks of the Arkansas River from railroad, from the railroad bridge to Main Street Bridge and recommending no fishing signs.
Is there a motion?
Just one, just a side comment if I may.
Don't comment until we get a motion.
Okay, motion is, move, accept, and file.
All right, now is there a second?
Second.
All right, now your comment.
This, uh, is a related issue, I had, I've already spoken to, uh, Bobby Ward and to, um, Mr. Rhodes with the Parks and Rec Center, the, uh, the, the River Walk down there has been utilized by ser, by many vendors in the last few weeks and months and has become stained, uh, from them spilling of all sorts of beverages on it and so forth, and I had asked, uh, them as soon as they could possibly get to it down there to, uh, take our high pressure washer down there and clean the, uh, clean the River Walk, and that was the only reason that I, uh, brought that up, uh, that was because it was related to this issue of the, uh, litter problem down on the riverbank.
Any other discussion? Mr. Rhodes is back there and I know, uh, I don't know if Mr. Ward is there, but, uh, our, I know that Street's, uh, Mr. Smith's here, so we'll get that, uh, we'll get that done. We are appreciative of you bringing that to our attention. Uh, you know, just, uh, a little background, that, if you'll remember where we want to do this is where the Maritime Museum and the, uh, and the, uh, Arkansas Queen, uh, is, they, we put large riprap down there, it's real difficult to get to the bank and, you know, we're concerned that somebody may slip, fall, uh, injure themselves, uh, it's not really conducive to fishing, uh, and then, you know, trash and litter, uh, that naturally go with it in, in that area, there's plenty of places that we want people to fish, uh, in fact, that's something we encourage, but this is just a, a real, uh, difficult place to do that and, and so, you know, I understand that I could have done this, but I wanted to make sure that the council knew it and, uh, and understood our reasons. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, we're in, uh, there are no presentations, we're in public hearings, uh, we want to reconvene the public hearing regarding the traffic, uh, circles, speed circles, I guess you could say, on Cary Drive. I'll convene that, Mr. Smith, you want to introduce that, uh?
Yes, sir, I have a, a map and a layout.
Before Mr. Smith talks, uh, you know, I understand, we had a problem, I guess it was last council meeting, with our, uh, television connection and, uh, and we made sure that we tested that, uh, you know, on enough of a timely basis that we could have any, uh, any corrections needed to be done. However, we now know or have found out that the telephone lines between, uh, us and, uh, and Comcast are not functional, we don't know what that problem is, but that's something that we didn't test, didn't, never had to in the past, but bottom line is, we're not going out over the air, they're working on it, trying to see if they can come up with a fix, but, uh, until we see a picture back there in the back, uh, we're not being broadcast over, uh, uh, over our television station. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Yes, sir, as you're aware, there has been a request for some type of device there on Cary to help control speeding and, in fact, the result of 400, 4,283 cars were done with a, uh, an average speed of 31 miles an hour with the 85 percentile, in other words, 85% of the cars were traveling at 36 miles an hour and some cars are traveling between 35 and 50, so, uh, there is a problem with speeding. Uh, the layout y'all have is a fairly typical one of a traffic circle that would be used to control speeding. Uh, we've taken calls the last 10 days, uh, down at Public Works, we had 18 calls, 16 were opposed and 2 were in favor. This is at the western, uh, there, Clay Cut Circle is a horseshoe off of Cary and the traffic circle that's proposed is at the western, uh, horseshoe where it comes into Cary. It's in a curve right there, it's by the large church. Uh, this drawing is a generic drawing of a traffic circle and, uh, that's what's been proposed at that location. You can tell by the drawing that what's required is that traffic comes in and has to not go around Clay Cut Circle, not do anything except traveling through that intersection, but it does have to maneuver a 12-foot in diameter, uh, circle in the middle of the intersection. So you would have to come to it and kind of curve to the right and back to the left and back to the right to keep going and all the traffic that comes out would have to go around it that comes out on Clay Cut. Uh, we're proposing right now to do it with buttons, not a permanent installation, but buttons. Um, we're aware that there are large brick mailboxes along there that might be a hazard if somebody were to, uh, get off the pavement, but, uh, the device should control speeding and it's not necessarily something that we would say we are in favor of doing, it's just something that's been offered for consideration.
Uh, with that introduction, Mr. Smith, uh, any questions of any council member and then we'll open it for public comment, Mr. Alderman Height?
Uh, Mr. Smith, uh, can you describe what type of alterations would need to be made to the, uh, to Clay Cut Circle itself as far as the curbs and to Cary?
There's two approaches you can take, the permanent salute, permanent installation or the temporary installation. At this time, we're proposing the temporary installation, which would require no changes to the existing infrastructure out there. What we would do is go in and do everything with either paint or the traffic buttons to, uh, channel traffic within the existing pavement.
Thank you.
And I think, uh, an example of one there.
Mayor. So you're only gonna do one and that one, you're not gonna do any construction, just buttons?
That is correct. If, if it turns out that, uh, the center island is sort of the key and even a temporary installation, that center, center island could be made out of concrete, it's a 12-foot in diameter circle and we're, at this point, we're gonna outline it with buttons, but it would be easy to come in and put in, say, a, a 2-inch curb and then about a 4-inch taper and then a flat concrete surface, so if you did hit it, it wouldn't be like hitting a curb. You could, if you, if you had a trailer or your back tire hit it, it would just do like anything else does when it gets.
We need to warn folks if we do try this, uh, you know, to make sure people know what's coming up, uh, you know, that's the last thing we want to do is have folks have an accident because they, uh, are avoiding, you know, that island.
They will have to, they will, it will be a visible feature, they will have to go around it, that's the whole purpose, is to have to go around it. Uh, they will have to slow down to do it, if they don't slow down, they're gonna hit something.
I just want to make sure they know that they're gonna hit something.
There's, we'll have signs, warning devices, striping and a, a goodly amount of those buttons right there. I will have to say that if you're in a, uh, tractor trailer rig or if you've got a trailer or if you're one of the people that do yard work and have one of these long trailers behind you, if you don't slow down and go around this properly, you will probably, one of your rear tires or your trailer will hit one of those buttons and if you're going 30 miles an hour when you hit it, you're gonna know it. When you go through here, the whole point is to slow down.
Another question.
Go ahead, you've got the floor.
Uh, cost of installing the buttons and constructing the, uh, island that you were just describing?
Well, the, the temporary installation with the buttons, we're probably looking at about $2,500. If we go in there and make that center concrete, that'd probably be a couple of thousand dollars more. If we were to go in there and do a tempor, a, a permanent installation, I was looking at close to $30,000 before I noticed that all those large brick mailboxes were out there, every one of which would have to be moved, so, well over $30,000 for a permanent installation.
So you're saying 4,500 then for the buttons plus the island?
For, $4,500 if we make the center concrete instead of button, instead of buttons.
Oh, okay, but if we just put in the buttons, are you still gonna put in that, you were describing an island that was?
The round circular island will have to be there.
That's, that's made out of buttons?
Right now, we're proposing buttons, but if all goes well, uh, we could convert it to concrete.
Okay.
Alderman Witcher and then Alderman Gibson, did I see?
Okay, all right, Mayor, let me make a couple comments, you know, uh, in 97, we put in a speed bump in that area at the residents' request, uh, almost, almost from the day we put it in, there were, uh, continuous complaints about the speed bump from the individuals that lived in the 1,200 block of Cary and, and others who had to cross that on a regular basis. Consequently, we took it out within a period of 10 months to a year after we installed it originally. Uh, this area has continued to grow, uh, new homes have continued to be developed in that area, more individuals are using Cary as an east-west corridor between, uh, I guess Camp Robinson Remount area and JFK. You know, there, there is no doubt that there is a problem in this area and we, and we want it to be safe for the residents in that area as well as the motorists who use that area and, you know, this is one of those instances where we are looking at different, uh, traffic slowing devices. Uh, this by no means is the one that we're gonna go with, uh, you know, and Charlie and I will have to make that decision based on some advice from both Mr. Marvin and, and Mr. Smith. Uh, if anyone in the public has a suggestion, we'll most certainly be happy to, to consider that. You know, I, I don't think at this point in time, doing nothing is one of the, the options that we have, you know, we need to do something to help the neighborhood become a little bit safer and, uh, and the motorists to, to slow down in that area. Uh, so, so with that, uh...
I'd like to, uh, make one last comment and we read one short paragraph here in the study that was done, uh, back when this was proposed for a speed hump. Few locations studied for the need for speed humps has been found to be more troublesome with respect to constant speeding unless regular and ongoing police enforcement can be accomplished or some sort of speed control device utilized, the unsafe condition will continue.
Any other comments, Alderman Gibson?
Mr. Witcher, I believe since you proposed, is I guess the question would be to you, you have the same situation that we have over off of North Hills and ideas that we've created areas that's very difficult to get out of because of the amount of traffic that's going through. Have you even considered three-way stop signs at least on both ends of Clay Cut? Just, you know?
And then that is, that is a possibility?
And possibly even further down, I mean, uh, they, they, it almost gets to be a joke of jumping a speed bump. I mean, it, it seems like the guys in the, the big cut, in the big vehicles, whether it's a Jeep or, uh, one of the big vehicles with 32-inch tires, it's kind of fun to see how fast they can go over the top of one of them and it's a continuing problem. Uh, you can't get them, if, if speed limit's 35 miles an hour, 30, and they're going 30 and they jump a speed bump, that's just them, that, plus the neighbors here, all of it. Uh, much like we're looking at over on Maple and Orange in particular, and I'm gonna talk to Mr. Parker about an area around Little St. Mary's also, we're gonna, we're gonna request quite a few four-way stop signs, simply, and, and even some three-way ones, simply to try to get people to slow down going through an area and, uh, because you, basically, if you're trying to get off of Clay Cut on to Cary, you got a problem. Part of it because of curves and other part of it is simply sight distance.
Yeah, and, and of course, timing during, during different parts of the day, you know, that being in the morning and the late afternoon, you know, that area is heavily used. You know, we, we were hoping that we could find some type of device to get, that could serve in, in more than one area, you know, I, you know, Mr. Parker has a problem of a west scenic, we have some other areas, uh, you know, one of the things that, that, I guess, Mr. Height and I have found, uh, you know, while a stop sign sounds good, uh, you know, sometimes the local individuals, you know, they'll glide through those, those things and they don't, you know, when you're depending on someone to stop, uh, and they don't, you know, it's dangerous.
It is dangerous and, and, you know, it's really funny, and I was trying to explain to John, Mr. Parker the other night, I don't know what the little town somewhere in Texas I went through, but they have big old orange 55-gallon barrels, they're sitting right on the middle of the street with a big sign, 25 miles an hour, no tolerance, and I can rest assure you that I believe they meant it because everybody slowed down and it, they had, basically it was over on 82 and they got tired of people flying through their town and so they made it to where, you know, you by golly had, you didn't have to come to stop, but sure, you sure had to come to slow down if you didn't want a lot of yellow paint down the driver's side of your vehicle. I don't want to perhaps to resort to that as a total answer, but, uh, it's much like we have on almost every street that's over four blocks long with no place to stop and I don't know how long Cary is from one end to the other without having to stop, but it's a long ways and, uh, people just tend to be able to pick up a little speed, part of it goes downhill and as you go downhill, they don't get on the brake, it's just too much trouble and so, uh, the only answer we've found so far has been four-way stop sign, but it may be yellow barrels that we'll be asking for next in our ward.
Yeah, Alderman Berry?
Yeah, the one question I wanted to ask is, how about our, our big emergency vehicles? Are they, how hard a time are they gonna be getting through this?
Well, as long as they slow down, they'll be able to go through there without bumping. It, they'll have to slow down too. Okay. Any other questions?
Mayor, can I, can I have one comment, uh, address, Alderman Gibson, I've talked, I don't know how many people that Alderman Witcher has talked to on the telephone, but I've talked to several and I think each and every one of them that I discussed the possibility of, uh, putting stop signs over at the intersection of Clay Cut and Cary and possibly and maybe even another location on, up on the upper end of Cary to slow traffic down and, uh, without exception, everybody that I discussed that with was in agreement with me that stop signs would, would, um, would be a more positive, uh, or proactive approach to slowing speeders down on, or, on Cary. With that thought, uh, it's my intention that, uh, if we get to, uh, choose and vote on, on an option to, uh, as far as a traffic control device on Cary, that I, I intend to suggest that we put stop signs on Cary rather than speed hump or, or, excuse me, these speed bumps, turning circle buttons. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, since he addressed me, may I answer him?
Well, let me, yeah, but let me just make a comment, if, if we're looking, the stop sign is about 50 bucks.
That's right.
So, you know, I mean, if, uh, if, you know, if that's, if, if, if we're gonna, what we need to do before we, if we're preferring or leaning toward preferring a stop sign, you know, to me, it'd be much more economical to try that, you know, we've got this public hearing, anybody that want to comment on either one of those can do that, but I would suggest that we have legislation, uh, to, uh, direct us to do one or the other so that we can have a consensus of the council. Uh, let's see, do we have any, we don't have any legislation on tonight, though?
No, sir, we don't.
All right, well then, what, what I might suggest, and I'll open it for comments to Alderman Gibson before we, you know, make the, make it available to the public, uh, but I, if, if we're considering one, that's, uh, to me, we need to do the more economical one if indeed that's it, uh, Alderman Gibson?
I think Mr. Height also got the phone calls, I had zero that wanted a speed circle and many that said, yes, four-way stop signs with the police cars up there to help us regulate traffic, it's, uh, is a much better case and, uh, you know, the fine for running a stop sign is showing up in court at least.
Exactly. If we had the manpower in City North Little Rock to put the motorcycle or the radar units every place that they were needed, we'd have to double and triple the, uh, the size of our police force, which economically we can't do either. I mean, I don't, if, there doesn't, there's not a week that goes by that I don't get a phone call or two suggesting that we put the motorcycle, uh, units or, or the radar units in some area in my ward, uh, Cary, uh, is, is normally included in that, so, if we're gonna do something economically, I think that stop signs would, uh, would at least try that and if it doesn't work, then we'll have to consider something else, but I think stop, you're right, it's, it's more expensive to run a stop sign than it is to fly over a speed hump.
One, one reason, you know, we could do like Martin Harkins did up in Conway County for years, he had a police car out there with a dummy on it, wasn't anybody in it, but, uh, you know, we've got an awful lot of cars that are not take-home cars that could accidentally be parked in a few of those places, just.
I slowed down for that police car every time I went to Fort Smith.
We all did going to Fayetteville.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, let me, uh, turn this over, uh, over to the, uh, anyone in the audience that might care to comment on this, Cary speeding is a general topic, uh, feel free to come to the microphone, if you want to talk about Cary speeding, introduce yourself and let us hear your comment.
Uh, my name is Shonda McCauley, I live off of Cary, I don't live directly on Cary. I do agree with the two gentlemen who were bringing up the proposal for stop signs, um, the reason that this is, is my husband is not from Arkansas, he's from a south suburb of Chicago, um, and that is what they do for speed control. There are no speed bumps, there are no speed circles in that town, there are stop signs every three blocks, which we used to think was absolutely ridiculous until now. You cannot gather up enough speed until you have to hit the next stop sign. Um, I also think that, um, until we can, I think that the speed limit thing on Cary is kind of a joke at this point because when you, on, um, on Channel 11, you know, we have those, the operation speed things, um, I see that they're gonna be on Cary Drive. I've never seen a police officer on Cary Drive on the days that that was announced and, you know, I figure if you're gonna put it up there that they're gonna be there, then a, a police officer needs to be there, um, doing some speed control. And that's my only comment, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Microphone's still open? Speeding on Cary.
James Dickey live on Green Bank Road, the Clay Cut is right next to the railroad tracks, people are slowing down with that already. If you're gonna put a stop sign or put a circle, it needs to be at Cary Loop, the two Cary loops, that's where the speeding is, it's going down the hill and up the hill. It's not so much going around the railroad tracks, it's that the loop between those two big, uh, white lines you painted on the road supposedly slows people down, the road narrows because of the white lines you put. If you're gonna put something, it needs to be between those two streets there. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Rita Kaylee and I live off of, uh, Cary on Cobblestone Circle, which I use that particular intersection of Clay Cut as my entrance and exit, exit to my subdivision. Um, I am not at all in favor of a traffic circle, I, first of all, the sign went up on the 14th and y'all had a meeting about it on the 17th and we've never seen a picture of it, I called for information, I, the, I was told, just show up, I can't give you any information about it. So I've not seen anything, I don't know what this thing looks like and frankly, I don't care what it looks like. Uh, I'd like to know how that particular intersection was chosen because I agree with the man that just spoke, that's not where they're speeding, they're speeding at the bottom of the hill, they're getting up, trying to speed to go up and down around Cary Loop, not Clay Cut and Cary because of the railroad tracks. Um, so I, I have a, a, a problem with, first of all, understanding this concept when I don't even know what it looks like. Um, I'm certainly not in the least bit excited about the prospect of you putting any sort of a temporary or a permanent barrier in the middle of the road because it, for those of you who don't drive on Cary very much, we have a lot of construction going up around my neighborhood and so you have big trucks with hauling lots of things on oversized trailers, having to make a turn to go up Clay Cut to get to where they're building houses. Um, I foresee that if you make it difficult for them to be able to make that turn, they'll go up to the other end of Clay Cut and they'll just come down through the subdivision and go back out through the subdivision as an alternative, which I think is definitely not the right thing to do. Um, I would be interested in knowing how you chose that particular intersection because as I agree with the other gentleman, there are a lot of other places to put some sort of a barrier to stop, to, to slow traffic down besides that spot and, um, I, I, I just do not think that that's the proper thing to do, temporary or permanent, because I don't think that's the proper place to put it.
I think where we are right now, there's no legislation that's on, so just to make sure everybody's clear, that's why we are doing this hearing, uh, and, uh, the two council know, not speaking for them, that it might have to do with stop signs. And this was an attempt, and I believe it was a recommendation from our Traffic Services and Street Department as to how to try to slow traffic down on Kerry, but no decision had been made.
I understand that, but again, the people who live there have not seen any sort of diagram, we've not seen a picture, we have no clue what this thing is supposed to look like, or how intrusive it's gonna be, or how hard it is to pull out from Claycut without having to turn toward the other traffic and, and try to do a loop-de-loop to get back out to the, to the east side of Kerry. So we haven't seen anything. The sign didn't go up till the fourteenth. You know, so I have a problem with, with thinking anything is a great idea when information is not being shared, when we have not seen it, we haven't even been asked. I mean, I heard the gentleman say that you did a traffic study, but they don't just speed right there at the bottom of Claycut, they speed from the minute they turn the corner. They slow down because they have to go across that railroad track. So I would like to know how that particular intersection was chosen over several other options, which be Kerry Loop, which makes the most sense to me also. And I would like to see what this thing's supposed to look like, because I don't see how any oversized vehicle is gonna be able to maneuver around something like that without knocking it down.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, just, you know, just for general information and for your information, Mr. Marvin sent out a letter to those individuals who had signed a petition for speed hump, and those individuals only on the eleventh of July, along with a drawing of the speed hump, and along with a map indicating where we were proposing to, to look at one of these devices. And then, and eventually, there would have been multiple devices provided this work. So, you know, apparently, you didn't sign the initial, the original...
Oh, no.
...petition. Well, you know, that's your unit of information, so. And, you know, and we are in discussion, you know, we're, we're not proposing specifically that we do this, you know, we're looking for some method to slow the traffic down. And if you have any suggestions on how we can do that other than this, you know, that's what we're here for.
Well, my first question, which still has not been answered, is why was this particular section chosen over Kerry Loop, which is where the other, both ends of Kerry Loop?
The Traffic Services Division had recommended this location to us.
Okay, but...
That's it, that's it.
Wait a minute, Mayor, that's why we're here. We want to listen to what people are saying and commenting on it. That was a recommendation by the Traffic Services Department, that's all it is. We're here to listen to see whether there's other things that can be done. That's why we're listening to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate the opportunity to give you my opinion.
Sure.
And my opinion is, if you're gonna do anything, do stop signs and do them on either end of Kerry Loop.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donia Alexander, and I do live on Kerry Drive. I live at nine eighteen, and I've talked to several of you up there, Mr. Height and Mr. Witcher and, and Mr. Marvin, and we have lived there for six years, and in that me, in that time, the speed has, is totally uncontrollable on our street. And there was a speed hump in nineteen ninety-seven place, but that was before the neighborhood was truly established. There were only a few houses at that time, and I know there was a gentleman that had it removed. But that was, again, before there were, there was much traffic or a lot of the houses were already built. And, um, in the past, last year, my brick mailbox got knocked over two times within one month from speeding cars, and I have two other neighbors that have also had their brick mailboxes completely knocked down. And I have a four-year-old, and I do not allow him to play in the front yard because it is unsafe. The speed is, this, and I guess y'all have done the studies and you know, but that there's high speeds on our street at all times of the day and night. And I'm personally in favor of the Center Island, if that's proposed, but I'm also in agreement that that's not gonna fix the problem on our street, because that's only at one section, and that is right below the railroad tracks where people do slow down some, not very much, but they do slow, slow down some there. But towards our end, closer to Kerry Loop, I live almost right across from Kerry Loop, you know, that's where they pick up, they seem to pick up the speed from the railroad tracks down to the, you know, down to the end of the street, and it's a few miles long. So I don't think that just one particular intersection or one particular street doing something is gonna help. And I think that putting, like the first lady said, putting stop signs down the entire street, every few blocks, would be the best thing. So, um, I think that's all.
Mayor? Thank you.
Can I ask her a question?
Thank you, and thank y'all for your help, because this is a very big problem.
Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Lenisa Gilmore, and I reside at nine hundred Kerry, and I believe that's where the proposed circle would be. And I really don't care at this point what's done, as long as something is done, because I agree with Donia, it is a problem for our children, we don't let them play in the front yard. It was my next-door neighbor's mailbox that was plowed down, down right before my eyes, and it's terrifying. And I disagree with some of the people that have spoken, it is a problem right there at my house, because I'm the first house as you cross the railroad track, and they don't slow down. Only the buses slow down for those railroad tracks. They're not real railroad tracks. I mean, you can just continue right across them, and people do. And so I've watched, you know, people come over too closely. I'm always afraid when I'm getting my mail out of my mailbox. So I think that maybe it would be more cost-effective to go with the stop signs, initially at least, because I think we could spread those out along the street, because it's at my area and it's on down, it just continues. And when the police are out, it's on the other side of the railroad tracks in the, the older neighborhood, which is fine, they can be there as well, but there aren't that many homes along Kerry there, and all of the families are as you cross the railroad tracks. And so I, I'm always confused as to why they're there and not further down. But I, I am in favor primarily of the stop signs initially, and if we go to that, fine, but I think it'd just be cost-effective to start with the signs. Thank you.
Alderman Height had a question the last lady who said that, had that question, Alderman?
I just wanted to ask if, I've, I've been by your house, and refresh my memory, is it closer to Kerry Loop than it is Claycut Circle? Are you in between the two outlets of Kerry Loop?
I'm, I'm between the church and the other end of Kerry Loop.
Okay.
The churches and Kerry Loop.
Yeah, you're in that low spot down there, okay.
There's actually a long hill right there, which is, like, part of our driveway, but you have, Kerry Loop.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bob C., live at ten thirteen Claycut, have been there for seven and a half years, and so I use the intersection we're talking about. And I did talk to Tim Marvin, and I have a suggestion that's a little different from anything that's been discussed, but it's been used, and according to Mr. Marvin, it has worked, or it's been effective. You probably noticed if you drive Kerry every day that there's a narrowing of the street, and it is done by striping and buttons, and it allows a buffer zone between the curb and the people who are traveling down the street, which to me would seem to help the mailbox problem and, and maybe the problem that people would have backing out into Kerry. And according to Mr. Marvin, that has actually slowed traffic in those areas. So I'm saying, why not consider that in the other areas where we have driveways that have this problem? It's just a suggestion. I, I think there's a possibility that disturbs me that if enough people on Cobblestone and the other streets that feed to that point become discouraged about the intersection, it will add traffic to Claycut Circle, where we also have small children, and we have a similar problem if we start having that same traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Breck Hopkins. I live on Cobblestone Circle, and in the thirty-five months I've been there, I've lost three mailboxes, brick mailboxes. And Cobblestone's not a through street, it's certainly not from speeding or any other cause like that, so I think it's a mistake to suggest that the fact that a mailbox was hit automatically translates to the notion that the cause of it was a speeding driver. And whatever the answer to this problem is, it is not a physical obstruction taking twelve feet out of the middle of the street. I would echo those comments, that all that's going to do is increase not only everyday traffic of the people who live in that subdivision, but also heavy truck traffic up and down Claycut Circle, which is narrower than Kerry and, and not as well-designed for that traffic, and would be a mistake in the long run. Stop signs are fine, but I'd like to point out again that when the traffic study was done, the machine was down closer to Kerry Loop. It was not down near the railroad tracks, and my experience is obviously more limited than the, the lady who lives by the railroad tracks, but I can't imagine going over those railroad tracks at thirty miles an hour, and I don't see anybody do it. Maybe, maybe I'm just not out at the right time, but, but I don't see that happening. So I would just like to voice my strong opposition to any kind of physical obstruction blocking that intersection. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just have to comment on that the mailbox is about being hit by speed. The two times my mailbox were knocked over, the young girl that hit our mailbox was going, the cop said, around forty-five to fifty miles an hour, and she knocked down our mailbox to avoid hitting my husband backing out of the driveway with our four-year-old son, who was three at the time, in the car. The second time, a gentleman topped the car, topped that little small hill going too fast, completely knocked our brick mailbox into our neighbor's driveway and left their bumper and lights, you know, it almost totaled their car out from hitting our mailbox. So the incidents that I've been involved in were related to speed-related. They weren't just from somebody accidentally backing into our driveway, or they were definitely related to speed. And I know Lenisa Gilmore also observed it, and the person that hit that mailbox was also speeding of it also. So, thank you.
Microphone still open?
Mayor, while, while, if I may, while we're waiting for someone else, you know, Mr. Height and I have talked about this for a long time, and part of our purpose in making this proposal was to start a dialogue, and I believe we did. You know, we, as I said, you know, we know that there is a, a concern in that area for speeding. We do know that we need to resolve it in some form or fashion, and, you know, we were hoping that perhaps the, perhaps the individuals that live in that area could help us with some recommendations, and you have, at least you've made your feelings known to us regarding the roundabouts, and so, you know, we, we probably will look for some other methods.
Again, I want to underline our appreciation of those who came. That's what the purpose of this public hearing was, to hear what you and the neighborhood felt about what our desire is, and that's simply to try to slow traffic down and to try to do it in a way that's gonna be the most acceptable to those people who live there and travel Kerry on a fairly regular basis. So, you know, we appreciate you being here. I don't see anybody else coming to the microphone, so I'll go ahead and adjourn this public hearing, and it probably has some legislation, so kind of keep an eye on the next council meeting. I would end, end up with, I'm in contact with the two council members who represent that area, because we're, we'll, I'm sure, try something, and it's, it would seem like to me where everybody's leaning toward stop signs right now. So, thank you all very much, and now we've got a second public hearing on establishing, I'll go ahead and convene, adjourn that public hearing, I'll convene a second public hearing on establishing Smart House Way Central Business Improvement District. That has to do with the property located Catty Corner from the ballpark that we're working with developers on developing a condominium complex. I'll open that for public hearing. Anyone want to come? Michael Drake, you want to just introduce this? This is something that we're gonna try to do to relocate some power lines, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Hayes, members of the council. As you recall, in September of two thousand five, Main Street Argenta, nonprofit corporation, acquired the Smart House Way property with the understanding that one of our missions would be the relocation of the energy transmission lines from the Smart House Way site to the right-of-way of Riverfront Drive. A method to finance the relocation is the creation of this downtown improvement district. The idea would be, we would form the tax district just within the boundaries of this property, sell securities or place securities with a local bank, use the proceeds to relocate the transmission lines. It doesn't affect any other property with regard to the creation of the district, and it's being formed solely to relocate the transmission lines.
Anyone care to comment on that? The microphone's open? Going once, going twice, I'm gonna adjourn that public hearing. Let me just go ahead while we're, while this is before us, unless there's an objection, let's go ahead and call oh, oh-six sixty-five.
Yes, sir.
This is an ordinance establishing Smart, Smart House Way Central Business Improvement District number twenty-seven on North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Move for adoption.
Excuse me?
Move for adoption.
Move for adoption, is there a second? On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, let's, a public hearing, I think this is on Alderman Gibson's legislation, oh, oh-six seventy-one. I was told, Alderman Gibson, that we needed to have a public hearing on that.
We can have a public hearing then, or we, I guess we need to have it now, and then, it's, it's been scheduled for seven oh-five, obviously, as all public hearings. Yes, we do need to have a public hearing.
This has to do with a conditional use to allow an after-school program, after-school care program in a C-three zone for property located at forty-one oh-six JFK Boulevard. I'm gonna go ahead and convene a public hearing with regard to that conditional use. At that address, would anyone care to come to the microphone on that issue? Going, yes, ma'am?
My name is Helen Book, and I've lived on East I Street for fifty-two years, and I'd like to know just where this daycare is going to be, because my house backs up to the church.
It's at the church.
Beg pardon?
It's in the church.
It's in the church?
In the church.
Well, where would the children be? Always in the church?
Uh, there will have to be a playground area outside.
That's what I'm speaking of. Where is that going to be?
Mr. Boles, if you got the plan from the meeting?
Will there be fencing?
Oh, yes, ma'am, there, they...
And what ages are the children?
Mr. Boles?
They go to the church. And we do have the applicants here. They'll come into the church grounds, and this is the back fenced area.
Okay, where's the little building? Okay, we live at three oh-one East I.
Someone from the church?
Yes.
Which is right here.
Well, I believe Mr. Gentry's here.
Yeah, we live right here, and this was a vacant lot when we bought it, the whole thing.
They're required to notify within two hundred feet.
Yeah, well, we have that notice.
Brian?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Forty-one oh-six JFK, yes, ma'am?
My name is Jan Moore, I live at forty-three thirteen Idlewild. Our house also backs up to the church, is also adjacent to the Branch Bank next door to the church, which has a driveway that people cut through to get to the church. Before I voice my objections, I'd like to find out how many children are authorized.
Tell you what, I think we need to have a little bit of an orientation for this, Alderman Gibson, do you...
They, I believe the representative of the churches are, from the churches here.
Yeah, if we could, if we could have, you know, some basic information just shared, and then you'll, you will have, have an opportunity to come back to the microphone.
I'm Richard Palmer, and this is Father Keith Gentry, the director of our parish, parish. The number of kids that we're looking at for the first year is roughly about fifty to fifty-five children. The, the Department of Human Health Services has given us capacity for a hundred and seventy-one, but this year, since it's our opening year, first year, we're looking at starting small, seeing how the operation is, and then looking at expanding, but on a very small, in very small increments, for the number of kids that are gonna be there.
Father, anything else?
The school, the after-school care program is going to be housed primarily in the parish hall, which is adjacent to the church, and hopefully, future use will be towards the back of the church where there are some classrooms there. There is a playground right behind the parish hall that's in the process of being taken care of now, and there shouldn't...
care of now, and there should not be any children close to any of these houses at all, because there's some distance from the property.
What are, again, the ages of the children?
Kindergarten through grade five.
Excuse me?
Kindergarten through grade five.
Any other council member, any questions before we open it back up? Alderman Gibson?
No questions.
Thank you all very much. Yes, ma'am.
The other concerns are regarding traffic, not only on John F. Kennedy Boulevard, where people would be turning into the church, probably predominantly. I understand there was, at some point, some discussion about a left-hand turn, not allowing that, but even a right-hand turn into the church. At the time of day, most people would be picking their children up. The traffic along JFK is just unbelievable. So, they would not only be entering, but also exiting the church to get onto JFK. I think there's potential traffic problems there. The other traffic issue is that they would be cutting through behind the bank, which runs directly beside our house. It would increase traffic on Idlewild and through the Idlewild neighborhood. They may be starting with fifty children, that's still a lot of cars coming and going, but with the potential to be up to one hundred and seventy, I think that's potential for a big, a big traffic issue. Another issue, which I believe the lady was addressing previously, was the noise factor from the children if they're in an outdoor playground. Those houses do back up directly to the church, there's not that much distance. And then the privacy issue as far as any fencing that might separate the housing area from the church.
Thank you. Microphone's still open? Want, Alderman Gibson, you go ahead and adjourn this?
Going to adjourn.
Public hearing is adjourned. You want to wait till the regular part of the agenda? That completes the hearings. I think, Ms. Whitby, unless you have anything else, we'll go to unfinished business.
Yes, sir. Resolution oh-six-ninety-seven, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the construction manager's gross maximum price for the construction work on additions to and renovations at the Patrick H. Hayes Senior Citizens Center, sorry.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
And there's a second, now we have an amendment.
Right.
And that's the amendment that.
You got the amendment, Ms. Whitby?
That puts in the price.
Second.
For everyone's information, this amendment, which, well, let's just go ahead, this amendment essentially puts in the gross maximum price of three million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and eight dollars that's being tendered by CVM Construction. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's what we were hoping that we could come in for somewhere in the neighborhood of four million.
But we still have equipment and.
We have equipment, we have fees, and.
There's some outside, some outside landscape work to be done in addition to this.
So, that, the commission is working toward, you know, making sure that it's in excess of five million dollars, which was this council, at least my commitment, and I think this council's following through with that, but I don't think they're going to go over very much. So, this ought to keep us within that budget.
And if we pass this, they can start work.
That's, and likely next month.
Motion.
Motion made, second to amend. All right, motion made and seconded to amend.
Yes, sir.
All right, on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance oh-six-fifty-seven, Alderman Parker.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to hold this, but I'd like to make some comments pertaining to this.
Sure.
If I could. This was originally presented to the council as a solution to an ongoing problem in the area, and I do believe it would solve the problem, however, it might create some others as a consequence. So, in light of that, I've asked, and I'm looking for input from other council members and even the mayor himself, if we have some other solutions to our problem, we're certainly willing to look at them. The, this particular solution, albeit controversial, is the will of the people in many regards in that area, and it's been brought to my attention this evening that the newly organized Scenic Hill Association president and spokesperson this evening feels that there are in excess of a hundred signatures on a petition that will be presented to the council next meeting in favor of this, that it should be brought to the vote, up or down, as they say in Washington, D.C., let's vote it up or down next time around. And we're still looking for alternatives if it should fail, but, and I'm not necessarily in favor of the blockage of the street if we can find other solutions, but I will present it on behalf of the people of that area as a definite solution. With that said, but hold it till the next meeting.
Next item?
Ordinance oh-six-sixty-six, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Bryant and Witcher.
How we feel about those cell towers?
They're making headway, Mayor, so if we could hold this, whether.
All right, Ms. Whitby, I'll hold oh-six-sixty-six. I think all of us want those to held, oh-six-sixty-seven.
Yes, sir.
And let's go to new business.
Resolution oh-six-ninety-nine, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Tommy Couples to the Housing and Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-six-one-hundred, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Philip E. Davis to the Housing and Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-six-one-oh-one, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution confirming the reappointment of Thomas W. Rumor to the Board of Commissioners of Central Arkansas Water.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-six-one-three, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Myra Runyon to the Senior Citizens Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-six-one-oh-four, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution requesting the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department to approve additional signalization on Mammell Boulevard, State Highway one hundred.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to offer an amendment. I don't know, I think Mr. Marvin was on vacation, and so, let me just, Ms. Whitby, make this, make this suggestion. In section one, after the word site, just add the words "as referred to" here and above, which talks about an additional traffic signal fourteen hundred feet. I know it pretty well says that, I think, in the legislation anyway, but I just wanted to make that clear. And then, in addition, to have a new section two, and that section two would read, let's see, additional, additionally, additional, where do I write this now? Additionally, the city, the North Rock City Council requests that the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department undertake a comprehensive review of the nineteen eighty-one access control plan with input from the city in order to, in order to apply ongoing development trends, which may result in amendments or changes to the access control plan.
And then make a new section three?
And then make a new section three.
Move.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right.
Second.
I appreciate it.
Now, I think one thing, I think the first item can just be cleared up with taking, start after the word Mammell Boulevard in section one, take out everything, and put approximately fourteen hundred foot, fourteen hundred foot, feet west of the Walmart signal.
That'll, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Now, because I understand they've already approved the one at Mammell and Crystal Hill Road.
They've given tentative approval, that's correct.
Okay, and so then we're asking them also to approve one fourteen hundred foot west of that signal.
Right.
Point of order, if we, we ought to vote on this amendment first before.
Well, these all can be.
This is the, I'm rewording his amendment.
Okay.
The first part. The second part about the control access plan, he's got.
Mammell Boulevard, fourteen hundred feet west of?
The Walmart signal.
Okay.
And the Walmart signal is identified up in a whereas at Mammell Boulevard and Crystal Hill Road.
Okay.
In a previous whereas up there, which has already been approved. And then the second part is the, to review the nineteen eighty-one access control plan.
Yeah, just, in other words, take out associated with this development site and add the words, "signalization on mall, along Mammell Boulevard approximately fourteen hundred feet west of the Walmart signal."
Walmart signal.
Okay? And then the other wording.
Yes, sir.
What that does, I'm sure everyone knows, it's simply, you know, asks them to do a little bit more, and that is, we're asking for a waiver for this one traffic signal, but in doing so, we're also asking them to look over that entire control access plan and work with the city to try to make perhaps amendments, further amendments that may be necessary, so we don't have to come back for waivers on a, on a very frequent basis. On the amendment, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinances, ordinance oh-six-sixty-eight, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance establishing procedure for the implementation of electronic record keeping system for certain transactions involving the distribution of effetrin, pseudo-effetrin, and phenoprene as authorized by the Arkansas General Assembly pursuant to Act two fifty-six of two thousand and five, and North Rock Ordinance Number seven-eight oh one, first reading.
Move suspend rules and place it on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing procedures for the implementation of an electronic record keeping system for certain transactions involving the distribution of effetrin, pseudo-effetrin, and phenoprene as authorized by the Arkansas General Assembly pursuant to Act two fifty-six of two thousand and five, and North Rock Ordinance Number seven-eight oh one, second reading.
Mayor, at some point, I'd like to make a comment on this.
All right.
If I may, obviously, I think this is something we need to do. There are some procedural things that Walgreens has brought up as to some possible problems with doing it, and we need to do this, and we need to find ways for companies like Walgreens to participate in it. And it's very important that Walgreens participate in it, because obviously, within our market, they've got one, two, three stores, and soon to have four.
Right.
And while they're a very good corporate partner within the city of North Rock, they also need, they need to work within their system to find a way to be able to furnish this information to our police department electronically, rather than having to go by and get the logs. And I would say that we hold it one meeting and try to work out something with Walgreens.
Okay, I agree.
If anybody here that would like to speak on it, that's fine, but we need to do this, and Walgreens needs to figure out how to be able to do it with us.
All right, I'll ask our city attorney's office to make a contact. I know we've got an email, if I'm not mistaken, email or a letter from Walgreens.
Letter.
And. Donovan Peppers here from Walgreens. I visited with him before the meeting and interested in having a dialogue.
And I think that we certainly want to try to work with you all in trying to come up with a way that is, you know, good as we can to reduce the burden and yet to get the information. So, if we can work with you all between now and next council meeting, we'll try to do what we can. Where are we, Ms. Whitby?
It's been read twice, and I assume you're going to hold it?
Yep, let's go ahead and hold it.
Ordinance oh-six-sixty-nine, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance, amendment, ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven, to allow display of merchandise in certain locations of the city of North Rock Arkansas, first reading.
Let me just explain this real quick. We did this, I brought it up to allow sale of merchandise on Main Street. The council amended it to add it to all C-six zones, and then we adopted something, and I'm not sure exactly what it was, but it repealed what we had adopted. So, this is simply redoing what we'd done before that was, at least in my mind, inadvertently repealed by some subsequent legislation.
Yep, Mayor, what that was when we adopt the comprehensive zoning ordinance, we codified everything, and when planning codified, they didn't codify some of the newer ordinances, so.
Now, this was a mistake by the city attorney's office.
Negative. And for the record, I was halfway around the world when this happened, so.
Say you, I said the city attorney's office. So, if it is attended the council, we're simply reconfirming what we've already done, unless people have changed their minds. With that, I think we're ready to suspend the rules. Is that correct, Ms. Whitby?
At some point, I've got a couple of questions. Suspend rules, place it on second reading.
All right, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance, amendment, ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven, to allow the display of merchandise in certain locations of the city of North Rock Arkansas, second reading.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Now, Mayor, they may encroach a distance of four foot, as long as a five-foot passageway is maintained. That means that if the front of the building, they can go out four foot. They can't leave a five foot and go all the way out to the curb.
That's correct.
Okay, that's item one. The original C-six did not allow the sales of automobiles in the C-six zone, and this one goes down and says automobiles may only be displayed outdoors at an existing carlot. Now, that means that they would have been people who already were grandfathered in, which there's only one that I know of at this point, and that's the one at Eighth and Main, that he's grandfathered in. But I don't want us to think that you can have an automobile sales lot with outdoor storage in a C-six zone.
Mr. Boles, you're coming toward the microphone for a reason.
Make sure that I'm correct on that, because I can't find my book.
There's also a lot on Pike, near Fifth Street, that's, and we just wanted to recognize those existing carlots that have outside display as a.
Well, I don't have any problem with those. I just want to make sure that, and when we say an existing, it had had to been existing it, and when we say an existing, it had had to been existing at the time the original C six was done.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, how about, uh, suspend the rules?
Suspend rules and place it on third reading.
Second.
On the motion to suspend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance, amendment, ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven, to allow the display of merchandise in certain locations of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance oh six seventy, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
This is an ordinance accepting annexation of lands commonly described as lands to be titled, the Bentry Estates Annexation to the City of North Rock, Arkansas, and making Bentry Estates Annexation a part of the city of North Rock, first reading.
Suspend rules, place it on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance accepting annexation of lands commonly described as lands to be titled, the Bentry Estates Annexation to the city of North Rock, Arkansas, and making Bentry Estates Annexation a part of the city of North Rock, second reading.
Suspend rules?
Suspend rules and place it on the third reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance accepting annexation of lands commonly described as lands to be titled, the Bentry Estates Annexation to the city of North Rock, Arkansas, and making Bentry Estates Annexation a part of the city of North Rock, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance oh six seventy-one, Alderman Gibson?
Call it, please.
This is, this is an ordinance granting conditional use to allow an after-school care program in a C three zone for certain real property located at forty-one oh six JFK Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Move suspend rules and place it on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting conditional use to allow an after-school care program in a C three zone for certain real property located at forty-one oh six JFK Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Move suspend rules and place it on its third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting conditional use to allow an after-school care program in a C three zone for certain real property located at forty-one oh six JFK Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson?
The, uh, emergency clause?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance oh six seventy-two, Alderman?
Uh, before we go on, I know that, uh, you know, there was a couple of people that spoke in opposition, uh, and, and the council adopted this. Father, I am sure, you know, that the church, uh, will be very willing to work with the neighborhood and try to address any of the concerns, uh, in terms of, you know, the children and, and the, uh, perhaps screening or some things that, uh, might be done. So, you know, we, we, we have a high regard for the church. We also have a high regard for our neighbors, and we know the church will, uh, in light of this legislation and having adopted it, uh, will, will move to continue to be as good a neighbor as we can. Next item?
Ordinance oh six seventy-two, Alderman Thomas?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance granting conditional use to allow outside storage for a contractor's yard in a C four zone for certain real property located at forty-two thirty-two Balkum Pike in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I know the planning commission approved the, the rezoning here to, uh, C four with a conditional use to allow a storage room for a contractor. And I know there's people here that'd like to speak on it, and I want to give them out an opportunity, but I think we'll have to make some amendment to the, the ordinance as it's drawn. Now, I think the, as it's drawn up, it's not as, as the planning commission approved it. Uh, I might ask, if I could, uh, for, uh, Mr. Voels to give us an idea how we might change that to, to give it in accordance with...
Have we read it yet?
Yes, sir.
Paul's already worked up some language. It is supposed to be a rezone from R four to C four with a conditional use allowing outside contractor equipment. And it...
I believe it's R three, I believe it's R three to C four, isn't it? That's what the map shows.
Okay.
So it goes from R three to C four.
Okay.
Do you like that language?
I like it.
Uh, yeah, what, what we need, I think, is a motion, uh, let's just, let's go ahead and unless there's an objection, take it, uh, to, uh, the second reading, and then we'll amend it.
Move suspend rules, place it on second reading.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, suspend the rules?
Gibson?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
If four?
Suspend the rules is six, so Mayor can't vote. Uh...
If we, if we want to amend it, that's fine. I'd, I'd like to wait and get that done, but I'm not ready to go forward with it yet.
It's on, it's on the floor. Write for amendment.
Okay, now, if, if the, Mr. Thomas, if you want to make your amendment to, to put in the R, the R three to C four?
Yes, I'd like the, the wording that, uh, Mr. Voels had. If I might, if you would give that to us again, and then we'll, uh, make that amendment.
Mr. Seskey, you have those, that language?
Yes, Mayor. Essentially, the following words would be inserted in section one after the word "that," and it would reread that, "The subject property is rezoned from R three to C four and," and then the sentence would continue after that.
Is there a second to, or is there a motion and second to that?
So moved.
And I'll second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Uh, the amendments suggested by the city attorney be incorporated on the motion.
Um, I just have a quick question. So the rest of that sentence is gone?
No, what would continue on?
That is the only word.
Yeah, after the word "that," that would be inserted.
Okay. Uh, Gibson?
I'll vote for this amendment, yes.
Robinson?
For the amendment, yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, what's your pleasure, Alderman? Uh, Thomas?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to, uh, allow the people who live adjacent here to speak on this. What we want to do here, I'm sure, is to make sure that this is something acceptable to them, and we've discussed it, and I'd like to have them speak on it if I could at this time, too.
Well, before we do it, and I'll certainly honor that, uh, is just to get a quick idea of what we're speaking about. Uh, you know, Mr. Clifton?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Alderman, uh, I have a piece of property at forty-two thirty-two Balkum Pike. Uh, it's a little over two acres there, and for years and years, it's always been residential. There was a man that lived there, uh, gosh, I don't know, ever since I was a small child, he had about eight houses on this property. He always kept them up real nice. They were always nice-looking properties. He lived on the properties. He kept them rented. Uh, but Mr. Diffie, uh, passed away. I don't know if he sold the property before he passed away or not, but anyway, the, the property has changed hands over the years and has continually gone down. Uh, four of those houses have been torn down. Right now, there are four structures on the property, and, uh, one of them, I believe, is occupied. Uh, it's my intention to tear down the other three structures, uh, to put a contractor's yard and renovate one of the houses into an office, uh, to fence the property, to make a nice property out of it. That would be compatible to what's going up and down, uh, I thirty, or, uh, England Highway. Right now, uh, the land use plan shows, at the last rezoning ma, or zoning map, the land use plan showed to be residential. I believe that if it were to be redone today, that it would either show commercial or I two right now. Uh, right now, there's a C four non-conforming body shop about hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty feet away from it. There's a taxidermist shop next to that that's non-conforming. There's a dirt mining pit behind the property that's non-conforming. Uh, there's a feed store right before you get to this, that's non-conforming. Uh, there's a propane gas sales before you get to this, that's non-conforming. The property next door to it, uh, is just in terrible disrepair. Uh, there's things scattered out all over it. If y'all had a chance to look at the property, you know what it is. Uh, it's my intention, uh, to take the property and make a nice piece of property for it and keep a business that's in North Rock now to keep him in North Rock. Uh, the other option he has to go is go out of our city. And, uh, they've been in business for forty years here in North Rock, and they want to stay here, and I'd like to have the opportunity to put them on this property. Thank you.
Any council member have any questions before we, uh, all right?
I have a question, Mayor.
All right, Alderman.
The building that you're gonna leave, uh, is, is it correct that you're gonna leave one of the buildings up? It's gonna be a buffer, act as a buffer. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There'll be a fence around all the property and a, a side yard fence back behind that building, or to the front of the building and behind it.
Okay, and am I correct that the planning commission, uh, almost two weeks ago, voted seven affirmative votes and one abstention for this?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you. Alderman, uh...
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna let the people who live next door have a chance to speak, 'cause I know they're concerned about what's gonna go in. I'd like to have them, uh, give them a chance to speak, and I think they're not as much concerned about the rezoning as they are what's gonna go in there.
What's going in, right.
And if you would, why don't you come to the mic and tell the council how you feel on this and...
I'm Nancy Hinson, and I live next door to this property. I'm not opposed to rezoning. I'm opposed to having all of the, the fence up against my bedroom. It'd be in my bedroom mostly. And, uh, that's what, here I have a picture. Property, I mean, it's, uh, house. Access down to lake or anything with all this, uh, I might, it's in my bedroom. And, uh, the reason that we weren't here before, whenever it was dead, we did not get a, um, a letter. It was mailed to one twelve Saunders. And we did not get it. We knew nothing about it until a week ago, when we found out what had happened.
May I ask a question?
And Mr. Clifton knew where I lived because I bought property from his nephew. He knew where I lived.
You mentioned that the notice went to one twelve, may I ask?
It went to one twelve Saunders.
You mentioned that the notice went to one twelve Saunders. Have you ever lived at one twelve Saunders?
I have never lived at one twelve Saunders. I found the, the house. The house is vacant. The house has been vacant for possibly almost two years.
I have a question for Robert Voels.
I see.
Mr.?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hinson.
Mr. Voels, on this piece of property, uh, are they gonna concrete the driveway or they putting in gravel?
He's graveling the, the yard.
Okay, let me ask you something. If he put in gravel, will that cause a lot of dust? I'm just asking.
Possibly.
And the reason why I'm asking is because, Ms. Hinson, correct me if I'm wrong, you indicated to me that you have someone that live in the house that has breathing difficulties, that's on a breathing machine.
Yes, twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four hours, okay. Um, I guess my next question about this is, now, now, Ms. Hinson, you indicated that you don't have a problem with this being zoned commercial. Your problem is what's going, what, what is gonna be placed on the property?
Yes.
So what is gonna be placed on the property?
Well, my understanding is it's gonna be heavy equipment and pipes and all of this.
Construction equipment?
Yes.
Mr. Voels, is that correct? Mr. Clifton?
I think he said a bulldozer and trackhoe or heavy equipment of that type.
Mr. Clifton, go to the microphone. Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
It's K-Bar Contracting Company. They are a general contractor. Uh, there is no outside storage of any of their materials, pipes, construction goods, anything like that. They have, uh, bulldozers, backhoes, things like that, that they take from one construction site to another. And as they are finishing jobs, they come in, it would be their storage yard and office for their, uh, equipment. No, uh, pipe, storage, beams, uh, blocks, lumber, things like this, none.
So this equipment would be on the front of the property?
No, ma'am, it would be toward the back.
It'd be at the back of the property? What's gonna be on the front of the property?
The, their office, their office.
No, no equipment will be parked on the front?
Absolutely none, no, ma'am.
Okay. The, will the equipment, will the equipment be stored inside or will it be stored outside?
It will be, everything will be under the fence.
Okay.
There will be no, absolutely no parking.
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll let you come back to the microphone. Yes, ma'am, I'll let you come back to the microphone.
Just a second. I think I misstated my question. Everything has to be inside the fence?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, now, is this a chain link fence or is this a privacy fence?
It can be a privacy or chain link. I think our ordinance states that it has to be a privacy fence.
I think it does, number one. Number two, I misstated my question. I asked, was all equipment and pipes, et cetera, going to be stored under cover? And maybe, I know it's going to be stored behind the fence, but I mean, because it has to be, but is it going to be stored outside, back there, or are they going to build buildings to store this stuff in?
Their intention to build a building at some point in time, but I'm sure that they'll not build a building that they'll be able to store every piece of their equipment inside, no. Now, I'd like to answer about Ms. Henson not getting notified. And I, along with her, called Beach Abstract, who got my list of the 200 feet, and they sent me their list of the latest deed, and that's what they're required to do, and the latest deed that they have on file shows Donna Henson, 112 Saunders, North Little Rock. And that's where it was sent by my secretary. Had I have looked at it, yes, ma'am, Ms. Henson, I would have known that you did not live there, but I did not look at it. I turned it over to my secretary to be mailed out, and that's exactly what we did, and that's our proof of notification that we did. Now, the deed that I hold here is a corrected deed done by Beach Abstract, her attorney or someone, I don't know that, but that's what the address here on the filed deed that Beach Abstract picked up, and it was sent as it was supposed to have been, but she didn't get it. So, and we didn't know that until she brought it to our attention.
I have a, and I'm making a comment here. I have a real concern about C4s. It seems like in Ward Two, we have our share, Ward Two and Ward Three, but it seems like we have our share of C4s, and I have a real problem with C4s, simply because, you know, right now, you may have this construction company there or this contractor there, but if they move out, this property has been zoned C4, and it could end up being another East Broadway with used car lots. And I just have a real concern about this piece of property being zoned C4. I also have a real concern about this contractor's equipment, be it bulldozers, backhoes, and what have you, being so close to the residencies. I just have a real problem with that, and I personally cannot support it. I just have a real problem.
Mr. Thomas?
I think we've discussed it, Mr. Henson, them two. It's not good residential property anymore. They know that, too. They know that when they dispose their property, it'll have to go with some of the use. It's worth much more for commercial use than it is for residential because we have drug houses there, and they've had, we've had those in that neighborhood, and I want them to be satisfied, but I think they are, they understand that the value of the property is not residential anymore. As you see, it's commercial, and I think that their chance of disposing their property some future date is so much better as a C4 than it would be in residential because they're not going to buy there and build those houses. See, we have no sewers down there. There's no sewers, no houses going to go in there when you have to have septic tanks. We've been there all these years, and we all got septic tanks, so, but I want them to be satisfied, and I'm trying to do the best I can here for both parties, and so I want them to be satisfied, but I know that that property out there is not good for residential property anymore.
And --
It goes to the river.
And I'd just like to interject is that the Hensons have indicated that they do not have a problem with the property being zoned commercial. They have a problem with the C4 and a problem with the type of equipment that's going into that property. That's the problem. So they, she has indicated to me she doesn't have a problem with, you know, commercial. She has a problem with the C4 because of a used car lot could go in there, and the problem with what's going in, the contractor's equipment.
Right now, we've read it once, we've amended it. Alderman, Thomas, it's your latest --
I just want to say one other thing that they do know, they knew, do know the contractor. They've, I think they've been friends with their family for a long, long time, so I don't think they're concerned too much over the contractor because they come from the same part of the country. I'd just like to, as a move that's really suspended, put on second reading.
All right, I told Ms. Henson that she, if she had any other comments, that it'd be fine with me. Ms. Henson, did you have anything else?
What I was going to say is, our sewer line runs where that fence would go, and if I had a problem there, then I couldn't fix the pipes or anything because it runs right down where that fence would go. And that fence is going to be right in my bedroom, almost, and I don't like that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Thomas, would you withdraw that motion, and let's see if we can work on a couple amendments before we spend the rules?
Why don't we, if it's, if it's okay, why don't we just, just hold it, I guess, or whatever you want to do, and see if we can work it out, because I don't, I want them to be happy as well. And is it your field line that runs out from your septic tank that you're concerned about? That's, it's septic tanks out there, and I'm just wondering if it's the field line that might be a problem. That could be corrected easily, but I --
Was there any discussion along the line? I mean, I understand what Alderman Robinson said about a special use or conditionally, I mean, in a rezone like that, you know, that means that somebody could come in six months from now and that's rezoned, you know, and do whatever they might want to on that.
Yes, sir, that was, that was brought up during the Planning Commission, was brought up, but it so happens that some of our lending institutions have made it a policy not to finance properties with special uses, for the simple reason is the special use goes with the person, and if it, if they were to have financing on a property and that person sold the property, then that special use would go away and the property reverts right back to what it was.
Mr. Boles, come up here just a second. Isn't there a way that you could make that property not be conditional, I mean, not expire with ownership?
Well, that's what we're doing with the conditional use. Conditional uses are allowed and --
Okay, now, wait a minute, it says, now, we're talking about conditional use for C4 zoned property, but the property is not C4, is it?
No, it's residential.
But this ordinance does, mayor, rezones it from residential to C4 and then grants a conditional use on the C4 property.
In our permitted use tables, we have conditional uses or permitted uses. So unless it's already a defined permitted, which outside storage of contractor equipment's either industrial or heavy commercial, we thought it would be closest in this area to be C4, the option would be industrial. So there are homes all through there. The land use plan does show it to stay residential, although it is under stress, as Allen has expressed tonight. But banks will not loan if it's a residential zoned property. That's what he, you know, they'll look at the documentation and find it's still zoned residential with a special use permit.
Is C4 the proper zone or is there any other zone that would be permitted?
It would either be C4 and industrial with a conditional use for outside equipment storage.
Question, mayor, why can't it be C3?
It could be C3 if the conditional, I'll have to get the zoning book to see if it has outside contractor equipment in C3. C3 is a clean regional retail. It's not the intent.
But we're not, the, but the situation is, is we zoned it from R3 to C3, that takes away about half of the problems, okay? It's zoned into a commercial, then you conditional use it in to basically what is an I-2 zone is the storage of heavy equipment materials. So my question is, why can't we rezonate from R3 to C3? We traditionally do these in two separate documents, and it makes it a lot easier to try to go work our way through it, but for some reason, one of the pieces of legislation, the one that never made it, never made it here. And so I think if we can work between now and next meeting to take it from R3 to C3 and then go into these conditional uses and clean up some of the discussions they have in regard to it, I think we can work our way through this. I do find one thing is that, that we've established a 40-foot building line in the front of it, but then we're allowing a building to stay in that 40-foot.
That's what he's requesting, yes.
And that's, that's another rarity that I've never seen us do before. So those are the kind of things, I'd like to ask Mr. Thomas to hold it. I think we can get close enough to passing it, but I, but it needs to, for me to vote for it, the first thing it's got to do is be moved down to at least C3 and then special use from there, or conditional use from there.
And we can do that if the C3 has that as a conditional use.
I thought that we could conditional or special use, anything, but I don't guess we can.
Your permitted use table lists those that you say are, can be made harmonious.
Okay.
But would you want heavy contractor equipment in McCain Mall or Lakewood Village?
No, we wouldn't, but that, what I'm saying is, is that's why we're doing a conditional use or a special use of the property. We're doing a C3. If we move it from R3 to C3, I think it'll --
Then add a special use.
And then add a special use to it, the property's going to be zoned commercial, which is what the banks really have their concern about. They don't want, they won't loan money, they don't want to unless you put up a lot of other collateral to a piece of property that's going into a non-conforming use. But if we make the use from R3 to C3, that limits the conditions of what may be there once K-Bar left the property.
Okay, well, where we are right now, we've got a, an amended piece of legislation that's been read once. Alderman, Thomas?
Well, what I was going to say, as far as I know, all of the people out there in that, in that section are willing for it to be zoned C4. I'm just trying to get something here that, the only objection, I guess, it'd be on the council, but the people out there, as far as I know, would like the C4.
We need, we need you to tell us what you want to do. Hold it, move for, suspend the rules?
Can I ask for clarification? When it was read the first time, the motion failed to suspend the rules before it was amended.
Correct, and then it was amended.
Right.
And now we're in discussion.
But does that motion to suspend the rules not still stand?
Well, it didn't, as I, as I'll rule, the motion to suspend the rules was on the principle legislation, and it failed.
Okay.
It's now been amended, so I would, you know, I'll just rule that the, that if someone wants to ask for a motion to suspend the rules, it'll be a proper motion.
Okay.
If he wants to hold it, it'll be proper, it'll be a proper --
Let me read it one time. Let me ask, the rules we suspended and the amendment be placed in, if we could.
Motion is that we suspend the rules on the amended legislation. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second, so it'll be back up next council meeting. Any council member? I think that's all the legislation, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Any council member?
I'd like to see Mr. Ford, Harold Ford, after the meeting.
All right.
Charlie.
Not seeing any, we'll open up public comment. Public comments open. Come forward, state your name, and let us hear your thoughts.
Harold.
Yes, good evening. Scott Miller, I'm representing Argenta Neighborhood Boosters. I first want to apologize to this council. I was here at the last meeting, and I passed out some literature on some codes and things, and I regret that. Apparently, I got that off the Internet, and some of those were not updated. I want to thank Mr. Wadley for educating me and getting me the correct information. It was a great help. We still have an issue there. Mr. Suskey will be looking at that over the next few weeks. I greatly appreciate that and look forward to his help in that, too, and I hope we can take care of that. Last, we go last Friday, and fortunately, three of North Little Rock's finest had to respond to an incident at that house, and there was another near incident this afternoon. So I appreciate the city looking at that and the prompt attention, and particularly want to thank Mr. Wadley and his office for helping in these issues, too.
Thank you. Microphones open.
Mayor, while someone's coming to the mic, I think Ms. Whitby and I are having a debate on whether there is, in fact, some type of regulation or ordinance regarding political signs and how, how quickly they can go up and how quickly they should come down. We'd appreciate if Mr. Suskey might be, might do a little research for us and provide some guidance. Ms. Whitby's recollection is that there was a memorandum, and I can remember discussing it because we, we talked about the Freedom of Information Act and --
This would be a good time for us to see if we've got anything, and also, whatever we have, I know it's very, very difficult to legally restrict political free speech, so, you know, let us know.
Mayor, it'd be nice we get them off, off of the leftover from the last election signs, off of the right of ways now.
You bet.
Particularly the one right behind the liquor store at Seventh and the railroad tracks.
The old code's listening?
And can I clarify my recollection? It's a memorandum from when I worked in your office that I typed for you that outlined the way that we would like for them to do it.
That was so long ago, that would be into history.
That was a long time.
I think that had to do, you know, principally with right of way, if I'm not mistaken.
It had to do with how long you could put your lines, your signs up in advance, how long you had to take them down, the distance from the right of way. It had several items in it. I have a copy.
Well, let's read it.
I'll get it.
If we did it, I'm sure it was right.
I think she gave away how long it would --
Mr. Taylor, all right, thank you very much, counsel, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. We're back to the dog. I can't believe a dog has caused this much trouble. First, I talked to the guy, of course, this is, this is not here about the dog tonight. Animal shelter is taking care of that, or it will be in a few days. But I put up a fence to where I wouldn't have to look at the stuff and to smell it. For a while, that worked, till the fence dried out, and then now it's back. But that's a fence there that he come and got a permit and put up. He's got a house, half of it, and his carport, his garage, all of the water drains off of it, onto this concrete slab that runs right down beside of my property, and it goes through the fence where it's been going for over 40 years. He didn't only put that fence up, he jabbed them boards in the ground, and it's holding water. Last Friday night, we got a pretty good rain, and it wasn't that one it likely got in there, it was one that come through about 2:30. And the trash is still there, if y'all want to go look at it, where the ring of the trash is backed up in another half inch, it would have been in my garage. My complaint is tonight that this permit, I called Robert Boles, talked to him, showed him a picture. He sent Mr. Green out there to look at it, and Mr. Green tells me that this guy's got a year to do whatever he wants to do with this fence. And I asked Mr. Suskey about it, and he said it's a silver matter. I take it to the planning, they transfer me to the guy in the back, which is code enforcement. When did the code enforcement start straightening up the planning's barge ups? It looked like y'all would learn something from this Morgan portable building. You give a permit and you don't even check it out, you don't even look at it, you don't even pay attention to it till someone gets in trouble. And I think it's a sorry deal for y'all to sit up there and let me have to go to Sherwood and sue this man, cost me money, time of my job, over this permit, and y'all ain't got somebody that's got the backbone to go out there and tell this man, he's going to have to jack this fence up to where this water can run under it. And I can't believe some of y'all can't do that. I don't guess that nobody got nothing to say. But one of these days, somebody going to bring a pair of britches down here and put them on, y'all, it fits a little tighter than ones you've been wearing. I don't appreciate this one bit.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Microphones open.
This is about the cell tower. I understand they're going to talk about it next meeting or?
About what?
The cell towers. Mr. Hogan lives at the, right behind Ridge Road School and has been a vocal supporter of getting something done about that, and, and I was going to call on you earlier tonight, but we kind of run through that real quick, but would you give us an update?
Well, it's looking, it's looking much better, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and Mr. Gibson, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Height, Mr. Witcher for listening to our, it's looking much better. There are a couple, few concerns, but if you're going to bring it up next time, I can just wait and --
We're going, we're going to make sure before we vote on that that everybody has a chance to get right.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
My name's Matthew Richard. I live here in Argenta, and just as a taxpayer, I wanted to voice my displeasure at the approval for the senior citizens' construction money. I sure hope that in the next 10 or 15 years, there's not another $5 million in taxpayer money to improve this wildly popular facility whose greatest need we all know is parking. And I understand that parking's expensive, and I understand that it might have meant that we couldn't have had an extra room for the quilters and certain other amenities, but we're giving up a significant portion of the existing parking that isn't sufficient for the wildly popular senior citizen center. And from what I understand about boomers and their age, there's going to be more seniors coming to this facility in the next five to 10 years than are coming today, and there's nowhere for them to park, and you're not going to have enough golf courses, I mean, golf carts and satellite buses and so on to get people to this facility. Again, parking was the number one requested improvement, and it couldn't be funded, I guess, and so it got taken off the list. So I'm disappointed as a taxpayer, as a person who's contributing to this improvement. Thank you.
Microphone's still open.
My name's Bill Trousdale. I'm here with Jimmy Hogan on the cell tower issue. I want to thank you for the interest in what you all have done with Verizon on that, and I want to say that Jimmy Hogan is, is representing the neighborhood very well, I think, and will be supporting him and following the issue. I live on the corner, right across, right on the ball field there behind the school on the corner of West Ridge and M., and there are some items that still need to be looked at, and we'll be following it, and I want to thank Mr. Gibson for what he's done. On a sidebar, I've been involved with Parks Department for 23 years with the disc golf course there, and I've had business with Mr. Hayes on occasion with the disc golf course and getting things done out there. And I wanted to say that working with Willie Alessandro here in the last few years, that he's been the superintendent, has been quite an experience. I have my kudos to him. If he does half the job at the airport that he's done with the Parks Department, it'll be fantastic. And I want to thank him and Mr. Rhodes also. I take this opportunity to thank both of them for what they've done at the park system.
Thank you. Microphone's still open.
Mr. Mayor and council members, once again, my name is Mark McEnelia. I've spoken a number of times about the issue regarding the gate, the closing of West Scenic. I just want to clarify a couple of things for our purpose. It's my understanding that it is put off until, I believe, the 14th for final vote. Is that correct, sir?
Mr. Parker's legislation, whatever our next council meeting is.
Okay. And we voiced a concern with Mr. Parker, the fact that we do have a petition that has been circulated. At this point in time, we have 118 names on that petition for blocking off West Scenic. We had a, at the onset of this, we had presented a petition, I believe it was mailed to each individual council member, I'm not sure if you received it or not, at which point in time, I believe there was over 200 signatures on that petition. We found out, unfortunately, that, that we did not follow the proper steps in order to have that petition properly presented to the, to the council, if I'm, if I'm correct. So we're, at this stage, we're trying to rectify that, that problem. We're going to continue on with our petition drive, and we, we are in anticipation of having 200-plus signatures for the closing of West Scenic. We hope that, that the council, we've asked Mr. Parker to allow this to continue on, like he said earlier, to give an up or down vote. And one thing that I would remind each of the council members here today, this is a personal issue for, for many people up on West Scenic, and, and we know that each and every council member here represents a different ward throughout the city, and as we've heard earlier tonight, there's a lot of issues with, with speeding. We think that this is one particular thing that would eliminate many of our problems up on West Scenic Hill, and there's no doubt that it's going to get worse. Right now, we, we know that there's an overpopulation of apartments up on, on that west end with, the school is there, it's a thriving school, Fort Route is there. There's a lot of things that, you know, that can be offered as solutions, but I think the best solution would be to close West Scenic. What we plan on doing is we plan on having as many of our residents from West Scenic up here for the final vote. We want to try to show you, not only with the petitions, but -- We want to try to show you, not only with the petitions, but have physical presence here of what we want. And we would ask each of you to please, to please take into consideration each individual person that has signed that petition, and do what the people would like. We know that there's a lot of opposition, most especially from those from the apartments. We've heard some statements that, that they believe that this is racially motivated. That is certainly not the case, because from the area, from the wall back down to the east there, we're a very diverse community. So I, I can guarantee this council that it is not racially motivated. It is motivated by the, the homeowners there that want to protect the value of their property, that want to ensure the safety of our neighborhood, the safety of our children. We want our neighborhood to continue as it is, a nice, peaceful neighborhood. That's, that's basically what we're asking for. And we'd, we'd like for you to, to not particularly, as, as you represent your wards, but not particularly look at our case based on your ward, but look at this piece of legislation based on our specific request and needs. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
I know that a few of my neighbors have talked about the cell phone issue.
Need to have a name.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Jude Lee McMarion. I live on West Ridge.
Sure.
I am two houses from this ugly thing. Originally, I was one of the neighbors that gave the okay for this, for the tower. That's when it was supposed to be, or it was supposed to be, before it was moved. I understand from a few of my neighbors that Jerry Phillips, I'm not sure if that's true or not, he is the one that gave the okay for it to be moved. I don't know who gave the okay. None of the neighbors knew until all of a sudden the crane and the trucks and all the equipment came in to move this huge eyesore right here by my front door. It does not help the sale of property up there. I understand it is a problem. I've talked to my neighbor, and he is working with some of you. All the trees, all the bushes, the grass, the straightening of the fence is not going to help this huge thing sticking up in the air. You know, I jokingly said, "Put a flag on it, it would look much better." You know, I, I know that there's nothing we can do now because it is moved, but it would have been nice had they contacted us and sent us a letter stating that it was going to be moved. You know, they did that when they wanted to put the cell, the, the tower in. And then all of a sudden, all the neighbors, it, it didn't seem to matter what they wanted. Other people made the decision. Anyway, I understand that it's not over yet, but I just want you to know, there's still a lot of unhappy people. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you.
My name is Mary Nixon, and I'm here as a neighbor in support of the cell tower issue. And I'm, I, like Julie, I live two houses from the corner where the tower is up. And she's, she, what she said was true. We didn't know any, that, how this was coming about or anything like that. At first, they did very shoddy work, and there was a lot of, a lot of complaints, and I'm sure cause to you all. And I do see some, a lot of improvement, and I thank you very much. The, the trees that they planted around there at first looked like they were all dead, and it was, but just the other day, I noticed some green leaves coming out. So maybe, maybe those trees are going to grow up, but this does have, have a, a impact on, on our property value. So I'm just here in support of the, the neighborhood, and I thank you for anything that you do.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jim Ard. If Alderman Witcher and Alvin Height will see me after the meeting, there is a place. It's higher than where they're putting those cell towers. And I talked to the gentleman that was here, and they may be interested. It might be a, it's a bitter area. The guy's got four acres he'd love to sell. So if y'all are interested, see me after the meeting, and I'll give you more information. First, I apologize to Ms. Whitby. I was sitting back there reading the agenda, and somehow, the wrong agenda got put on the counter. So I was reading last week, so that's the reason you got your note, because I thought I had this week's agenda. Also, I apologize for somebody misunderstanding that y'all never helped anybody, because they can be big help when you go up on the internet and you look for an ordinance, and it's not brought up to date. I'd like to thank Mr. Rhodes. I presented the pictures that I had last council meeting to him concerning the things that went on during the bills, beer sale. He was concerned enough, he's got copies of them, he's going to check into it. I offered them to y'all. Also, I'd like to talk about selective code enforcement. I don't think it's right for code officers to issue citations when they let other stuff go, and they won't issue citations, it's right in the area. I also don't think it's right for a code officer to chase you down the street, jump out of his truck, and order you to pull over. He doesn't have any emergency license or nothing on his vehicle. Also, he left his truck running. Also, I'd like to thank Alderman Robinson. Have you finished your report on that? I know you don't have to answer questions, but you know what I'm talking about. Okay, but you did turn, we had a situation in her area where a code officer comes out. The lady has two cars. You correct me if I tell this wrong. The lady has two cars. One of them belongs to her mother, and she drives it to see about her mother, so she lets her car set up. She had it parked in the backyard. She gets a citation, she can't have that car in the backyard. Car's license, am I correct, Ms. Robinson? Had license on it, had current insurance. It would run. Now, you leave a car setting up over a month or two, if you get to start it once in a while, as most women would, it won't start, so you have to jump it. But yet, the code officer called it inoperable, and said she could not have it in her backyard. She had her son's boat in the backyard, he said she couldn't have that. Ms. Robinson was nice enough to come down, had her daughter take pictures of the license plate, and look the situation over, and she's supposed to got with code to find out what's going on, something like, "We thank you for that. I know you're running for office again, and that's probably a good push to get you a vote." We also talked to another Alderman who suggested that, Mr. Bobby Taylor. Call him, because he knew more about some things, and he could get something done. So, Mr. Taylor, maybe you need to run for Alderman also. But I have pictures tonight, Mayor, if y'all are interested, of selective code enforcement. This is where a porta potty's setting out in the yard so it could be used. And you can't get code to do anything. And I do appreciate what y'all are doing, and I'm sorry that we had to come down hard on you sometimes to get something done, but somebody needs to listen. Y'all have a very good evening.
I'd just like to make a comment. Anytime I get a complaint or a concern from a citizen, I try to go out and review. It's not just because I'm up for reelection. I've done that for the past four years. When I can go out and look at the situation, go out and talk to the people, I do that.
I, I like to say this, I never got a complaint from that, I guess, the party involved. I think Mr. Art called, but I thought it was proper for her to call, and, and that's the reason I didn't respond. I thought maybe the property association might like to take a look at it, but, but that was the only reason that I responded that I did.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kaye Alonso. I live at 417 West Scenic. I just wanted to make a comment about, I'm real excited that they're talking about putting a street in up by the apartments, and maybe putting a red light up there for those people. But I'd also like for you to consider that when that's done, that makes them have four lights to go through to get to the interstate on West 40. So what that causes them to do is come back down through our neighborhood, down Valley View, around, and they've got one yield, and they're on the interstate. So as much as that light and that road will help them, it will hurt us if we don't have the gate to go with it. And also, I'd like to thank the police department, they've been really great about coming up, checking out the neighborhood, walking around, catching the speeders, you know. I know they can't do that every 15 minutes for us, but they have been helping-